Hiya.
Are you all ready for the next one? Try to have a salient song.
I pledge allegiance to the republic and to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
Oh, thank goodness that's all.
Alright.
Okay, Mayor Minney.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
Monahan.
Here.
O'Hara.
Here.
Randall.
Here.
And Brennaman and Jones are absent with notice.
Alright, do we have any motions to approve the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Alright, any opposed or abstaining? Alright, we have a motion to approve minutes from April 6, 2021. I'm going to go with second.
So, who?
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? Alright, next one for motion to approve the bill submitted for campaign. Second. Discussion? Questions? Alright. All vote? O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
And Monahan?
Here.
Alright, is there anybody here that would like to speak in a public event on any of the agenda items? Alright, we got a couple of different resolutions out there. The most part, these are pretty straightforward. Couple of them are approvals and grants for different things out there. For most part, Dog Park and some of that. So, the first one is Resolution 2021-3, application for recreational trails grant.
Motion to approve Resolution 2021-3.
I'll second. Any discussion? Monahan?
Yeah.
Randall?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Next is 2021-4, consolidating Makita into SMGA.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-4.
Do we have a second? I'll second. Discussion?
Truce, how does that affect us other than just naming and reorganizing? Does that affect us in any way?
Not really. We were a member of Makita now, and since they're dissolving Makita and Lakita, they're dissolving those two organizations, putting into one, the Sum Metro Growth Alliance. Will be a member, if you were a member of Makita, will be a member of Sum Metro Growth Alliance. Same dues, nothing changed. We don't have to pay anymore. Amy's on the board right now to represent Hartford. This resolution will keep her on the board when it gets changed over to Sum Metro Growth Alliance. So, really, nothing. It's just a structural change for them, but our membership participation is the same.
So, our dues being paid up, that's just going to roll over?
Yep. Yeah. Yeah.
Any other discussion? Alright, all vote? Randall?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
And Monahan?
Yeah.
We got Resolution 2021-5, application for self-protection of Bishop Parks. The LWC.
Approve 2021-5.
Second.
Any discussion? Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
And Randall?
Yes.
Last one in this section, we got First Review, a ordinance 706, Establishment of Art and Recreation Board.
Motion to table for the next meeting.
Motion to table?
Second.
That's second. No discussion on the table, so we'll vote. Monahan?
Yeah.
Randall?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Alright. Alright, Mr. Horn?
You're up. Alright. Quick one tonight. Alright. Um, so March, we did 30 calls, 12 in the city. Still hitting about one call a day, so still busy. April training for EMS is, I can't remember, it got canceled for some reason last month, so they're going to double up and include infectious disease, EMS culture and safety with that. Fire training is going to be Vent Inter Search and Host deployment. And then, yeah, that's about it. Our pancake fee is going to be, or sorry, may 16th of the week on the station. I think that's all I have, unless I have any questions.
Well, pretty good. Things going well?
Yeah. Very good.
Good.
Well done.
Well done. Membership's good?
Yep. Got always used to dedicated people, but, you know, working good, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Good.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Alright. Amy, what's your chamber next hour development report?
Okay, my report is in the packet. Just want to touch on a couple of things with the Golden Heart sponsorships that goes with down, or excuse me, Discover Hartford. They were hoping to get six, we have 15, so we're excited about that. And we're replacing them all over the community to drive business to different locations. So, we're cutting some in fact. That will be done the week of May 3 through the 8th. Also, continuing to meet with different individuals regarding purchase of land opportunities. Met with some individuals Sunday, so excited to hopefully have them in our community as well. But just continuing to do those opportunities that arise. That's my report.
Alright, thanks Amy. Alright, and David with Design Engineering.
Evening, folks. So, our report's in there, but is there anything that you want particular question from? I don't know. So, previous agenda items we outlined there, but design standards, we've actually started initiating that review already. We've got kind of a working document, I believe, and that's how we kind of mark things up. Going through that, then we'll go through that with Craig and staff and review that in great detail before we, before we eventually take that forward. CIP updates, the RIT study, really less involved, so that was sort of feasibility study is complete. Project updates, Western Meadows Phase 4 is under construction. Then, this actually started this morning. There's a proof rule out there this morning that we had, there was about eight spots on that that were just a little soft, that there was different amount of deflection. You can have some deflection throughout the entire thing. It's not like there's zero tolerance there, but when you see some of those spots that show up, we marked those out and if you look by there lately, they've actually dug that up. They're going to put that back in. It's about the two inches that they're terrified. We'll put that back in tomorrow, they'll roll that again, and then we'll inspect that again tomorrow, actually, because they want to keep them informed and get rock down. Western Meadows Phase 5 is currently being reviewed right now. Most of our permits are compiled right now. We'll give the staff a bill of those, and then we'll present those to developer as well. Naps landing phase 1, there's two punctures items remaining. Through Craig, Phase 1, punctures items remaining. And then, Vance Peterson, uh, Peterson, Vance Peterson letter has been delivered. GIS, we're continuing to work on the transferring of the actual information and sort of updating that in our actual document as well. So, overall, we did go ahead and review lot 10, lot 2, and lot number 3, Naps landing addition for approval. And then, we continued our meeting weekly moving forward. So, I do say kudos to Craig for taking a long time for showing us around the community and just looking at various infrastructure, what's kind of keeping them up at night, you know, what are the things that we think that we can make some improvements on? And then, just really some of it, just getting to know the infrastructure in general. So, really good use of timing, I really appreciate that. On the waste water feasibility study, quite a lot of this information you're aware of, like the permitting and Discover Creek, that's some really good information that we see back from the DNR and feel really good in regards to your guys' timing on that. Since last meeting was with the waste water treatment technology, we've had Triple Point environment presented on the Nitrax system, which is, it would be an upgrade to the existing rooms. The Alpha Val presented on the SPR, which is an activated sludge treatment plant, and it's kind of modular, expandable, but that would be potential technologies used at a new mechanical water wreck facility. And we have kind of our big days Thursday and Friday, where staff will be going with a group of us, and we'll be visiting Alta, which is Aramod Albert City, which is Lema. Huxley, which is, do you remember, Michael? I want to say SPR, but I'm not sure. No, Huxley is Nitrax, De Soto, I want to say it's SPR, and Kingsley, actually we're replacing, but it's another state or so. We're going to go on a whirlwind for two days and see a ton of technologies. We really like that because it's an opportunity to actually ask direct questions to the operators. What's been working well, what have you not liked? They will actually tell us the truth, which is, which is really good to be able to hear directly out of their mouth. If, you know, what would you do different? I think that that, that's always good to know for the next one. So, regionalization discussions have been had with Kirks, Humboldt, Wayne Township, Colton, Lyons, Ellis, and Wall Lake. Wall Lake was the only community to climb further discussion. But then met with Colton on 4/15 to continue that discussion. And then, Lewis and Steve and Mitch on here, they're actually meeting with Lyons tonight. So, and then we're still working on some of the stuff on the feasibility of budget increases this block. Any questions on those particular items?
Vance Peterson letters, that's something that you can share with the consultants?
Yes.
Sort of hear email forward to us or whatever.
Yeah, for sure. I think you got a copy of that.
Yeah, it's something we started with then, you know, last year, and they're following up. So, sure, yeah.
Thanks.
The other thing, after last month's meeting, there was a question, a question and request for community development planning services. I'll go through this a little bit in greater detail, going through with a couple of communities on this process, really focusing on three main aspects, housing, quality of place, and commercial industrial development. So, this is, in a sense, this is really the visioning. It kind of pairs directly, which is nice, that we're going through the downtown master plan at the same time to process, because we're going to really look for the community's feedback. So, this community plan is something that really targets in those three aspects, where do we think we're at, where do we think we should go, what things do we think should be added? And really sets that tone for an extended period of time. Think of this as, is almost like a master plan for the entire community focusing on those three particular topics and really what we think needs to be added to the community. So, really, it's heavy on community engagement. The only time that this is done well is when that community engagement is a very forefront process, that we're getting the input back from the community and saying, yep, this is exactly what we're, what we're looking for. So, that'll be a series of actual sessions where we'll get feedback from individuals through boards and different precedent imagery. It's a lot of, hey, these are different things, what do you think about Hartford today? And what do you want it to be tomorrow? So, we've kind of outlined even a timeline in that. I think it's also great that it does focus a lot on, on the actual use, land use, when you talk about those three aspects, they're very focused on, where's the appropriate land use identification and things like that. So, I think it's a really good exercise for the community to go through and really, you know, set the tone moving forward for the community as well. Do you guys have questions on that, that community plan? I think we most certainly discussed it with, with some folks being out, that it made sense to just preview it. If you have questions, let, let us know.
No, I mean, I just had a chance to go through it, talk through it a little bit. I do like how it matches up with a lot of the different goals and different things we have planned for the community. Matches up pretty well with like our envision 2025 campaign to be able to know quality of place and some housing pieces and commercial development and some of that too. So, I, I like, I like the focus of it, I like the scope of it, I think that was good. And yeah, as David mentioned, it's kind of our chance this, this time to ask questions, dig into it. As that precedent we've sent, it's more or less a chance to kind of walk through that and not worry about approving it tonight, but really get a chance to clear up anything that you think needs to be covered in there, so.
Yeah, so, and what I would say, we're, we focus a lot with this, you know, typically, we would have somebody from our, kind of our industry search team, you know, mentioning side, the board side. Then, the landscape architecture team would be involved, our architecture team. And really, it blends those services together so that we really end up coming away with actual visual documents. I don't, you know, too often I see, and they totally said it's a purpose, but like a comprehensive plan, don't, don't think of this as a comprehensive plan, whereas heavy on the word doc, it's instead heavy on the visuals to really guide that. And if you ever want an example, we're going through the process right now with the city of Orange City, who most certainly has a very distinct brand, is what I would say. And going through that process has been really fun to go through with them and really, but we ended up doing it with them instead of the document, it's actually a website. And we've gotten community feedback through that, you know, some people have, you know, not been able to be comfortable to actually in person to sit through those meetings, but that's been a hurdle for them with that information there. And also, just for folks to run past ideas, to let them see things and react and say, ah, I kind of like this, I don't like this, but to really guide that vision.
That's good. Any new questions? Alright. In English?
Yeah.
Thank you. Alright, we have written reports from Stockwell on their update. Any comment or discussion or anything along those lines for that?
One thing I kind of want to point out to you guys, if you know, it's on the Nicholson Road improvement. You know, we're going through that FEMA loan mark process, the FEMA loan mark process right now, to show FEMA that, you know, the work we did in there didn't, you know, disturb the flood plain or whatnot. And before we did the project, they did a CLOMAR. Then, we did the work, and now we've got to follow up with the loan mark to show the actual work performed to the CLOMAR. Well, we did get a letter about a week ago, Stockwell's got a letter, I got a copy, the county got a copy, saying that they had concerns that the rise that we had shown in the CLOMAR was more, the actual rise was more than what was shown in the CLOMAR. And they had concerns about the building structure out there. Well, the building structure they have concerns about was the old barn that we tore down. And so, basically, we had a discussion with them, saying that building's not there, it doesn't affect anything. Took pictures, documents, innovation, sent a letter back to FEMA. I just got word today that they have accepted all that and they're moving forward with it. So, if you hear any issues with that from the county or whatnot, we have worked with FEMA and that's corrected. So, they were worried that it was just a slight rise and that it was enough to affect that building, but that building's not there, so we tore it down with the project. So, it doesn't affect anything, so just wanted to make you guys aware of it in case you're.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, if anything else, we'll move to the legislature part.
I'm just going to touch on a few things. Trees, we are working on getting a bollard tree planted up. And the Arbor Day tree, trees, they did get, I sent an email where the Humboldt just talked them about it, maybe we didn't care if they had a tree over there or not. So, we decided that we're just going to start doing an Arbor Day tree designated for Arbor Day and just start planting our own park systems instead of going over to Humboldt and planting trees. That all started, started out with little pine trees back 20 some years ago. So, we should have that, now we'll stay at Hartford with it. Water, Alan did get his test results back from his water distribution, he did pass that, so he's got one certification to take care of so far. Parks, if you've seen in there, what, a couple of years ago, trees are probably priced that I put together for resurfacing tennis court, and that's basically like the tile that locked together, and that's about $60,000 two years ago. So, if we decide to do some work on the tennis courts themselves, we might want to look at putting in the budget item for the fall over or something, but.
You know how big that is, Craig? How many square feet?
I want to say it's 100 by 120, something like that.
Can we just bust it up and pour it for less than $60,000 bucks? I think 60?
Possibly.
Because what's going rate of five bucks, five and a quarter a foot?
You'd probably want to just cut the.
680. 680. That's a good deal. Four inch or six? That's six inch, right? So, we could buy it a little cheaper for four inch here, we wouldn't need to, it's not a parking lot, but.
Yeah, the price for concrete's about 130 yard right now.
Yeah, with the six or whatever, Travis mentioned, that includes cost of the concrete.
Yeah.
So, you say it is 100 by 120?
I think that's what it is, yeah. And when you resurface them.
That'd be 12,000 feet? Or 110,000? 12,000. 12,000 square feet.
Divided by 80. Divided by 80. Well, then give your yards.
And if you just pay them by like.
I've got, yeah.
72,000 at six bucks.
And we do have a guy that.
They get tear on removal if you do that too. And you get no fence.
And you don't have, yeah, you'd want to cut inside the fence or bust that, I'll need a fence alone and just fill it inside. You still would have your markings and that guy, you don't, you know, it's painful, it's in price now.
I was just curious.
They're not cheap.
$60,000 tile ain't cheap either.
No.
One square foot, I mean, if you think about it that way, that's about as cheap as you can get for a floor.
Alan does a really good job of concrete. That's, that's what he did before he did our shop hole over there, pretty much by himself. The other guy's trying to help to knock it down, he said, leave me alone.
Pretty much by himself?
Pretty good.
Just throw him under the bus. Hey, you're going to pour this floor by yourself. Hopefully, you can come coffee and check on you.
Knock his down, get one foot, pretty much, and then he just said, okay, I'll leave me alone, I'll finish it myself, so. So, he's pretty good at concrete. Yeah, we'd have our cheap labor.
That's good to know. I know that Yale reached out to me wondering, you know, where the process is at. Said we've got some pricing we'll probably look at tonight, now we have some pricing.
Yeah, so it's not.
And that was two years ago, that price?
That was two years ago, yeah.
Yeah, we looked into that budget time, and that was the quote two years ago.
And then, the tile, when you put them out, they're going to have all the lines in them and everything like that, so you want to, if you want to do that, whatever ball it is, you put those lines in too, so you can have it all laid out, maybe more, just a permit, you know.
I think it's the tile.
They're just probably kind of narrow, I mean, I have never seen them, just.
Just like a floating floor?
Probably, yeah, something like that.
Outstanding, where? All right?
Supposedly. They do a lot of them, and they did one in Southern Sioux Falls, and I think they did one over in Bill Colton, but I thought it was Delaware two years, two years ago.
Still have to prep it all, I don't know what.
You'd still have to go in there and scrape some of that out, grind some of it down, take the breaks out and a little patch, and then just smooth it out. Yeah, so you don't want to get as level as you can by chipping.
That's another reason, I think, if a guy just poured a new one, because by the time you prep that surface above the floor, you're still putting it over, you're still putting it out above the junk. So, how long has that tennis court been?
Before me. I'd say in the seventies. If you mind, yeah, seventies.
I don't know. Either we just did half, but.
And we resurfaced it one time, or just re.
You did half one year, half the next, and just, I don't know. I just, that, that tile just sounds like a bandaid over a bad floor.
Yeah, it's just a way of covering up what you got. I mean, the last, it always helps, it's supposed to.
Well, it, it'll let the smog, it should base it on that.
Tell some kid pulls and pulls one of the tiles off.
Would you, uh, would you entertain the guy that poured the sidewalk at the sports complex reaching out to work up a price? City have time to remove what's there, I mean, to Mark's point, what would it actually cost?
I can get prices.
Okay.
Figure out something.
Sorry, I don't want you to tell that Alan did it. Put a trouble light. Because he's going to be there a while.
And then also with parks, I'd like to, like I said, thank East River for coming out again and doing light bulbs to replace, just shy of all 26 of them this year, so. You will notice that there's some that aren't working, they're still got some electrical issues, sockets missing, and stuff like that, that just, they won't let anybody up in their mask with them, so we have to hire somebody to come and do that by themselves, so, to get them all working. But they've been like that for a few years now, so. What are those? Sports complex, trees will be getting planted out there pretty soon. We lie bank, we did that partner with them, so that we can take care of. And we will be getting the nets on the soccer fields and getting them striped here, hopefully by Thursday, so. And that's all I have, unless somebody has any other questions for me?
Uh, just a question on the lamps, we still buy the lamps, right? For the ball field?
Yeah.
They donate that too?
No, we do, we buy the bulbs, yeah.
Buy the bulbs? What do those cost?
Uh, last ones were 36.
We're a long ways away from converting that to LED affordable.
Yeah, no, I did surprise them that board. At one time, we were paying just about a hundred bucks a bulb, but we found another place, came for them, so. They have changeable LEDs, we use pretty.
Yeah, that's a lot cheaper.
Alright. Anything else for Craig? Alright, good report. Thanks, Craig. And you to Karen's report? I just got one action there as well.
Yeah, I don't really have anything to add to my report. Action item is I'd like to attend Finance Officer's School out in Pierre in June. They didn't have it last year due to COVID, so it's been a couple of years, so I'd like to go. Registration is $75, and then hotel room is 104 a night, and I need it for two nights, so. Want to get approval to attend that?
I think we motion to send Karen Finance Officer's School or Training at Murray.
Always a problem again.
Training.
Finance Officer's School.
Finance Officer, yeah.
After you clean that up, I'll second it. Alright, we got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Alright. Any opposed or abstaining? Thank you, Karen. To Truce's report.
My report's in the packet as well. Still looking for some more, some more help. We've got about six lifers that I'm interviewing now, I mean, probably about three more through all the shifts. We've got one lifer that could double as an assistant manager, otherwise, we don't have any other assistant managers, so we need finance assistant manager as well, because Amy can't be there all the hours, all the days on it, so. Still looking for them, couple of public works guys, one public works, or a couple of public works assistants and one park rec assistant we're still looking for as well. We continue to advertise through the shop or our Facebook and website. I had Amy, she threw it out on Hartford Happenings, right? People like to read that, I guess, so. Have a comment about it anyway, so hopefully, so we're, we're still trying to look for them, so hopefully, we do have dump monitors though now, um, we've got Kiki Mullin in the backup, um, across the little swamp that is doing it, so that's all taken care of, and we've got that up and going, so.
The city of Sioux Falls increased their, while they, uh, they have an ordinance, they're just increasing their budget for parks and rec, park and recs are quadding programs by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I heard they were.
Try and get better pay to get lifers.
I guess I heard that they're having a very funny lifer.
Rec cities too, they're all struggling.
And without having them last year, they probably lost a pipeline of people that would have normally progressed out.
Probably shifted to other jobs, so. We did, um, Karen did send out to our former, um, you know, the one lifers last year to let them know it's open, they can apply, and we did have about three of them, I think, who reapply, but.
So I was going to ask, is that how last year, if we had reached out to those people?
Yep, yep, maybe every year she always sends them, lets them know, hey, it's open, here's an application, so, yes, we did reach out to them, and, yeah, like I said, we had some of them, who reapply, but so we'll continue that search, and if you know of anybody, tell them to apply. Um, and just putting there, um, Sheriff's Department, Mike Walsh retired, so there is a new sergeant in charge at that, and Zika, he actually stopped by here last week, had a nice visit with him, and um, so just feel free to reach out to him if you have any concerns or issues or whatnot, um, definitely wants to keep the relationship with the city and keep working well with it, so, you're like, nice guy. Um, kind of hold this, or just following up our census status, just kind of wondering when those numbers will come out, it sounds like it won't be until September until we got them, because of COVID last year and how they got behind, they're not going to get the actual numbers out until September, I guess, this year, so. Usually it's out earlier, but that's what I always just told today on it. And heads up, we're going to be sending out to all residents a pet letter, basically reminding them of the pet regulation. We're having a lot of issues with, uh, not licensed pets, running at large, people not putting them on leashes, not picking up after them, but we're getting more and more, as every summer, but it just seems like it's more and more, so we thought we'll just do a blanket letter, so if you get questions about them. Um, actually Jen's working on that now, and we'll probably get them sent out, and hopefully maybe by next week, so, just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
I can tell you from going into households and the leaders, there's a lot of dogs and cats out there. The average person has probably two. Of all the households I've been in, puts just about five hundred, probably fifteen percent don't have any, fifteen percent will have one. The other seventy will have between two and four levels.
But we got like sixty registered licenses in the city. How many? Sixty.
Wow.
Yeah, so.
Make sure they're just visiting. That's your premise.
So, yeah, so trying to maybe just remind everybody, but we're gonna, so hopefully we get back on a little bit, so, I want you to know that. I too have an action item, um, along with Finance Officer's School, that day before they're having a human resource school, um, I include that information in your packet. I would like to attend that, that's a fifty dollar registration, and it, they start it in the act at noon one day, and then goes to noon the next day, so I'd be staying overnight one night, two. I'd like to attend that, and then I'll leave, and then Karen will come, it's at the same place, probably be each other on the road.
I think a motion to send Trees to the Human Resource.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed or abstained? All right, we have old business, we have some cost estimates on the, our first discussion from last meeting.
And I do want to give you, um, I had in your packet an estimate, me and Craig have kind of fine tuned it, he actually went out to the one at Ellis, and, um, measured their fence, and he was thinking we'd need a, when we priced a six foot fence, thinking one foot underground and then five foot high. He went out and measured, there's only a four foot, so we thought we got a five foot fence, which definitely lowers the price, and you know, it's four foot above ground, so the price estimate, the fence seems a lot cheaper with going, with, you know, reducing the size of the fence, and then we did notice too, we missed, um, we didn't have anything in the first one with any signage, and we'll have to put you a few signs out there, so, this is an updated cost estimate. All in all, and including bringing water there, you know, having that right away there, um, we estimate the total to be about thirty-six thousand five hundred, roughly, being there. I did have Craig, we just kind of talked a little bit about what it would take to, um, concrete that parking lot out there, that's an actual seventeen thou, a little over seventeen thousand more, so that's a significant cost, and I don't know if we want to entertain that doing it now or not or whatnot, but, um, like I talked about a little bit earlier, um, we are going to apply for game fishing parks grant on this, I'm going to put this full estimate in there, and hopefully, you know, we might as well try to get whatever we can get, um, and then Deanna Larson also applied, um, last week, it was due for an AARP grant for twenty thousand dollars, so. Um, she thought that one, she would hear back on that by June, I'm not sure when we would hear back on game fishing parks, it usually doesn't take too long, so hopefully this summer as well, but you know, we want to entertain doing this, I think, we get those two grants submitted, see what we get back, and then, uh, we can move ahead, you know, and if we have to tweak some of the things we do out there, you know, obviously we can, but, you know, um, I think it's not going to be too terribly bad to, to get it up and going, it would be a nice amenity.
So that's that our condition has to be a foot underground, that's what they recommend for these dog parks?
Six inches is a, just, because you want to have it, you know, when you're on uneven ground, you're going to get some of those gaps and stuff in there, and then just get a dog that starts digging.
Sure.
And you take them on to get all.
And we're gonna have to get a half a foot, that could work.
So just a rough count, they counted like thirty some trees, are we getting trees from the Arbor Foundation, or, because a thousand for that many trees seemed.
We're just looking at some shrubbery, um, just going to Walmart or whatever, picking up some.
And just maybe that it would be along the bike path there? To kind of have that barrier between the, you know, gate and the bike path, I'm gonna try with the best.
The bigger trees right now, who would they get anymore? Get them to Mike anyway, because he's got a quarter that he buys, and that's all he gets, once he's out, he's out, so. He might have a few left over, but, um, I do have some money for art trees, so we might look at retaining some down there. And maybe that'd be a good spot to start a first arbitership department.
I don't see if there's anything in here where we kind of take the frisbee golf, non-holes out and relocate them, I mean, is that another five hundred, six hundred thousand?
We'd be, I mean, blowing up the rocks that are there, taking them out of there with the skidier payloader, um, pull the poles out.
Pretty easy.
Fill some holes in and, yeah.
At the same, they don't have any concrete paths or anything, so it's just pulling the poles and the rocks, that's a markers, that's a markers.
We have scorecards we'd have to have reprinted.
Nope, nope.
So I, I assume the city, the city of Sioux Falls just operates there's open to the public, regardless of where the public's from. And I assume this one would operate the same way. I mean.
I know you want to have a license, but how do you license a dog?
You know, as, as I'm sitting here looking at it, I'm thinking, you know, is this going to turn into the, you know, leaf drop off? But really, there's no, there's no really cost after the initial cost, so if there's, you know, if there's thirty people from the surrounding community that live outside state limits, if there, then I mean, there's no additional cost. That I would think of, maybe a little bit of water, but.
Doggy beings.
But I, I assume it'd just be open to the public at large, whether they're citizens of Hartford or not.
So I'm not really sure I can, because I'm monitoring that, you wouldn't want to pay for that.
You know, if you put up something that, then if you have somebody traveling through that wants to let the dog go and run, then they're not going to be licensed, tell them, you're going to tell them they can't let their dog run, you know.
But I mean, just as long as we know that going, yeah, but this is, it's going to be, if we know it, it's going to be a free for all, that's the way I see it, it's just going to be a free for all.
That's what Sioux Falls makes for you, they don't monitor, they just bring your dog over.
Suppose if you give it just like a, like a perks we have now, I mean.
And you also got to be ready, Sioux Falls did have somebody get bit last week, that dog, that two dogs got in a fight, and one was a bulldog, and for a pit bull, and another one, the guy went to separating, you got hit by it, so. Very possible.
As long as the state doesn't have any liability.
Yep, that's the whole thing.
And we, we just had to make sure we put it on the signage, that we're not liable.
They usually be aware, so.
Yeah, they're using that their own breath.
So you're just recommending that we wait, see, uh, like, what, what money gets received from the grant, or we.
That'd be my recommendation before we move forward or anything, just because we've said, you know, we will be submitting the game fishing parks, and we've already submitted the AARP. I say just, let's see what we get back from that, and then move forward from there. I know, I'm not sure on the AARP grant works, because Dan applied for that, but I know, like, game fishing parks, you really can't start any work until you get either a yay or a nay from them, and otherwise they won't cover anything you already done, so.
Sure.
That's how most all grants work through the state is that, you gotta wait till.
Trees, have you talked to the insurance company about that?
I haven't talked to them this go round, but when we were talking about a dog park last year, I did call and ask them about that, and and that, that is what they said, is that you have to make sure it's clearly marked and signified that, you know.
Well, but, because, because the thought I just had was, I mean, we can certainly put up signs that says we're not liable for accidents, but if we do this, we're literally putting it right next, right next to a walking pad. So, I mean, is, is there liability if we don't post it on a walking pad that says this walks right past a dump park? You see where I'm going?
Oh, I see what you're saying, that if we don't put a sign, like a walking pad, they're going to.
If something bad really happens, I could see somebody saying, why were you guys idiots and put it right next to a walking pad?
No, at, at that time, you know, we didn't have a location, so I let, you know, Austin certainly run that by him too, to make sure.
That'd be my biggest concern.
Where we're looking at putting it, you know, see if there's any other issues or concerns we need to be aware of.
But they're like that in Sioux Falls too.
By the walking pad? I don't have a dog, so I don't go.
Yeah, it literally is, yeah, talking to bike path there.
Say the one at Yankton Trail is in a park too, I mean, it's.
Well, it must, it must cover it.
I'll, I'll double check though, I'm just verified, there we go.
When you're fighting with your five year old, she decides to stop and watch the dogs, you gotta make sure you're ready for that.
All right, any other discussion on the dog park? Appreciate it, appreciate all the work coming into this, and, um, it's good, we have some grants moving, so. Looks like that's moving in the right direction, that's going to be great. All right, we'll go to, we got a couple of things for new business, uh, first item on there is the rule of the East Faces Award number five.
I think motion to approve for East Facing Five.
One second.
Discussion? Karen? On both, Keel?
Yes.
Oh, her?
Yes.
Monahan? And Randall?
Yes.
All right. We got three mineral proclamations, um, we've got all of those in our packet here, won't necessarily be, you're all aware of statements and everything that's on there, the first one is for Arbor Day, declaring April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, as Arbor Day, um, goes through, it kind of goes through our history of that, and, uh, the city of Hartford has been recognized as Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and desires to continue in its tree planting ways, so therefore I adjourn them. Clearing the city Hartford, do hear I command April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one as Arbor Day. And we've also got our Silver Star Banner Day, which, um, we're planning May first, twenty twenty-one. Um, we've done this one for several years in a row now as well, and Silver Star Families of America was formed to make sure we remember the blood sacrifice of our wounded, and able by designing and manufacturing Silver Star banner flag, and, um, and just honoring those that have served in that, that capacity, so. I declare, um, today's date that May first, twenty twenty-one would be Silver Star Banner Day. And then our last proclamation is Building Safety Month, which we've also done for several years, and declare Building Safety Month for May of twenty twenty-one, and we're committed to recognizing that our heroic strength depends on the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serve our citizens both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster, so. May twenty twenty-one as Building Safety Month. Do you need anything else on the proclamations, Trees?
Just trying to clear around.
All right. And Trees has got in our packet that, um, Hartford again has been, um, noticed as Tree City USA, so that's fantastic, thank you for all the work that goes into that, thank you Craig for everything you do to keep that going, that's been.
Karen, do all the advertising, I think you can thank Karen.
I didn't get Craig's. But you can have it, and I'll thank you Karen.
I like your pennants because you're a finance officer and you print reams and reams of paper.
Yeah, there's, there's a tree.
Craig plans some.
And the only other thing I have under correspondence, I didn't know, um, come and send out some more information, and to clarify how appointments happen with the open seats within here, I just, just want to make sure you guys didn't have any questions regarding that, or if you want to explain a little bit more now that we got.
My apologies for missing that, Karen and Trees, because I, at the last meeting, I had missed that provision in the ordinance, or in those statutes, so. But you are going to have interesting twenty twenty-two election, with the six open seats on the council.
You guys stay in the point of the seat, if they'll all be up at the next, so.
Tom, I, I didn't read the email.
Okay.
So you want to just give me the shirtlet notes on it?
We talked about that, that you weren't vacant, because, but there was a statute to clarify that, that said, if you don't file a petition for an open seat, that is technically vacant then. So the vacancies will be the four council seats that didn't have petitions filed. You'll stay in office until you go right down the list, I guess, and fill those with remaining council members with fill, until the replacement is there, so.
So if that, if that would happen the first meeting in May, would, would the two that weren't up for election vote on the third, and then the three vote on the fourth?
I think the five would vote on the, the one.
The one.
And then, I, I'd suggest.
So would you do, would you do it under old business or new business?
It'd be.
Because, because really, if you do it in new business, the, the people sitting here shouldn't be voting.
Yeah.
Because that seat would be vacant when you start the new meeting.
Right, you gotta fill the vacancy. But, but you serve until the vacancy's filled, so.
Oh.
I mean, it.
So you do serve.
It'd probably be new business, because it'd be the new council then, and, and both seats are vacant, so people are holding them until the replacement is, uh, by the remaining council members.
So you can still vote while you have the seat.
Right, so I'd suggest, I don't know if you start with Marco Harris, because that's a one year term, and then just go ward by ward. And if it's Mark Monahan's ward, he doesn't vote on the replacement, but. doesn't vote on the replacement, but.
Sure.
Claire's home.
Yeah.
So to that point, I think it brings me to my question, is if none of us are appointed, we're simply filling the vacancy, and the mayor could at any point between now and the election.
It's not a mayoral appointment.
It's not.
It's the remaining council members fill the vacancy.
Fill the vacancy, okay. Correct, it is clear, man.
So, so now when you say, because when we did this the last time, the remaining, the remaining council members, in my mind, that would be.
You have resignations where people were.
But that would be the two that weren't up for election, in my mind.
Okay, you still hold your seat until the vacancy's filled.
Yeah.
Unless you resign and you're gone, then, so.
So if you're still holding the seat.
Right.
Then really it'd be just whoever's six.
Select, fill that.
It's odd that they didn't fill this out better.
Um, you know, the packs worked these statutes since nineteen thirty-nine, when they find holes, they try and plug them, and it doesn't always work.
This was, this was an amendment from twenty fourteen, that's pretty new.
It is.
Yeah.
If I missed it, it was hidden back in the time.
I didn't, I mean, do Hartford did it?
Probably proud.
You want to look at the legislative history, you might listen to the, uh, committee reports on that, and the legislature in Steve Hartford's pension, but I don't know.
I gotta tell you, your colleague Larry though, he didn't miss a beat that night, nobody knew whether he was telling the truth or not, but boy, it just came, it just came out of his mouth, this is what you gotta do, he's just popping it off.
They killed her.
And nobody, nobody said anything different, so. That sounds good, when I get some free time, I'll listen to those.
No, thank you, yeah, thanks.
No, I apologize. Don't have to die in case of vacancy.
So take care of those the next meeting. All right, that's it for regular agenda items on there, um, we do have, plan to move into executive sessions, I correct Teresa, under.
Yeah.
Pushing move to executive.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or staying?
I make a motion we adjourn. Oh, what do you?
Dress if you want.
I rescind my motion, there you go. I'll make a motion that we have city attorney draft up a purchase agreement to transfer the twenty-five plus or minus acres on the north side of town to the H A D F, uh, with verbiage, plugging the city attorney into the H A D F.
Do we have a second?
Okay, second. I just wanted to make sure you got that all.
All right, any other discussion?
Is that clearing out, Teresa? Help to clean it up.
Grandma?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
O'Hara?
Yes.
And Kiel?
Yes.
I make a motion we adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.